All right, I'd like to call to order the August 19, 2013 regular meeting of the Board of Education. We convene at 7:00 PM. Quorum has been established. We have met in closed session and ready to do pledge allegiance?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval minutes of the July 15, 2013 business meeting and the July 15, 2013 closed meeting. Do I have a motion for approve?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, let's vote.
Terry Pavicich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Abstain.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we go on to our reception of visitors. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote tonight. Are there any visitors that would like to comment? Next, we'll go on to recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Only thing on the agenda is the Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pavanato. There will be a couple of items on the, to discuss at our next month's meeting, but I was hoping that all the board members would be in attendance at that meeting for that discussion. We did have two freedom of information requests this past month. One was fulfilled in part and denied in part, and the second was fulfilled.
Okay. We'll go on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve personnel report? Each one separate or altogether?
Altogether.
We approve them altogether. It's fine to illiterate the reports that are in that consent agenda.
Okay, well, go for, do I have a motion for the consent agenda that includes the personnel report, the financial report, and the approval of 2013-2014 grant programs?
So moved.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Julia. I'll second it.
Seconded. Let's vote.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Terry Pavicich.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
All right. Next, the tentative budget has been on display for 30 days. I declare as vice president, the public hearing is open. Are there anybody that'd like to make comments?
Actually, if you could, I'd like to make a presentation and then, then for anybody to make comments. Because I, there's, I have this up here, you'll, you won't find-
Presentation's going to be in the five-year projection, correct, Mr. Stalen?
It'll be the five-year, I start with the tentative budget, and actually, I'm going to roll right into the tentative budget and then have, at that point, maybe an opportunity for anybody here from the community to respond if they want to. And what I started doing today was just to pull the graphs that were in your written narrative together, but then, as I did it, I thought I would just make it easier in case there were any individuals here who didn't have it. So you probably do need to direct your vision up to the front here because it's not going to be exactly in the same format that you have in your packet.
What are you saying?
Tonight, we're gonna, I'm gonna start with the highlight of the tentative 2013-14 budget that was presented last month and approved for release to the community at that point. Then I'm gonna roll right into the five-year forecast because it is based on that budget, and we're gonna give the board at that time an opportunity, you need to go, if you wouldn't mind at that point, going to the open budget hearing where you can hear comments from community members, and then close that, and then we can ask you to vote. And even if it says votes on tentative budget, at that point, it would be our voting on our permanent budget. At this point, it's still tentative. The highlights are that it's balanced. Operating expenditures and the transfers, and I'll get to that in a little bit, are equal to the operating revenues. So these are, these are highlights. The reserves remain stable around 5.6 percent of the 2013-14 revenues. And in calendar days, it's about 21 days of operations. In school days, if you just do it based on 176 school days, it's around 10, 10 school days. So it's not a huge reserve that we maintain. We do defer revenue until the next fiscal year, so we are able to operate a little more well than that would imply, but we do not maintain a high reserve, and that's by design. The budget includes Common Core and Abbott initiatives that we've added this year, part of our strategic plan. The pension crisis and state cash flow issues are still unresolved. They are not directly reflected in the budget, other than there's a reduction in the state aid this year, which is really unusual, but there's nothing padded in the budget for a possible push-down. We don't expect the states to resolve their issues and push something back down to us in this fiscal years, and that's an important part of this budget. We don't expect any further harm, if you will, to our budget by the resolution of the pension crisis. But we continue to implement our stabilization strategies. Number one, keep the budget in place. Really, the second thing is to continue aggressively to address major capital outlay items and knock off as many of those off the list as we can. This is kind of a pinnacle for us, 1.8 million. Other than we added a, at the last minute last year, we added an $800,000 project that we, we took out of reserves, but for our normal allocation, it's 1.8 million, which is a high, our normal reserve or normal allocation is about 1.5 million. And we continue to pay down outstanding debt obligations. These are all things we think strengthen us financially, so we are ready to do whatever and accommodate whatever happens with when the state and if when the state pushes its pension resolution down to us. The fund balances, this is the exhibit you would see in your report and was presented at last month. Balanced budget, the lighter green, revenues of $82.3 million and the expenditures of 80.2 million, plus the transfers out of the operating funds of about $2.1 million, which are to the immediate right of the red balance there, are total each other and they're in balance. And so I'm very, very pleased, I guess, and proud that we're at this state in our operations to be able to do that. Overview for the revenues, total revenue growth expected to be 2.8 percent. This fiscal year of 2013-14 is directly tied to the 2011 CPIU, calendar CPIU, cost of living factor of 3 percent. Taxes, we are estimating to go up 3.4 percent. 3 percent is the CPIU limit for cost of living increase, and then 0.4 for new property added. Other local sources on a combined basis are actually down about $88,000 or about 2 percent. And part of that, the biggest piece of that actually is the TIF that's expired in Bolingbrook where we're getting about $110,000 a year is the biggest piece. Pretty much everything else in local sources overall is flat. We did not increase fees this year. State sources are up 8 percent largely because of expenditures last year that were getting reimbursed this year for special ed purposes, and then federal sources are down due to sequestration where they've actually reduced some of our grants. Now, the good news is that in the interim, we've now heard that we may get some more allocations, which will help us offset some of that. So there's a positive note, but it has not been incorporated into the budget yet. It's not been formalized. Here it is in the graph that you see or the exhibit that you see in your report, 2.8 million, sorry, 2.8 percent increase in overall. And the small notation at the bottom there which is contingency, we have an overall contingency of operating funds of about $1 million, which is just a little over 1 percent. Tentative budget expenditures, salary and benefits combined are up 2.65 percent in total. Salaries for existing staff in total went up 2.2 percent. The FTE that we added for our new initiatives for the Abbott and the Common Core were additional costs of about three tenths of a percent. And if you look at the exhibit in a minute, you'll see that our total salaries went up 2.5 percent. That's the total of those two lines, 2.2 and 2.3. The benefits are up 3.5 percent. Medical and dental actually increasing less than 2.5 percent, way below trend, continues to be below trend, and we have a fairly significant reserve in that area, which helps us if we do have any problems going into the future. IMRF budgeted, we put up, increased that account 6.3 percent. They have been increasing the rate over the last few years, in part because their total investment portfolio is not kept up with, and a lot of their long-term investments have been rolling off, so their investment yield is dropping, and it's part of the formula that they push down to district paid benefits. So we, that's the biggest factor in the total benefits going up 3.5 percent. Tentative budget expenditures, purchase services continuing around 5.5 percent in total. Food, service, and bus contracts are tied to CPIU, 3 percent, but we did increase in the operations and maintenance fund outside service contract budgets, and that's what's really pushed some of that up to, for that whole area to go up by purchase services by 5.5 percent. Supplies are up just slightly at 0.4 percent. There were some savings in utilities that were helping to offset some other costs in that area. That's why the yield is, the net is 0.4. Capital outlay up 9.5 percent, and again, in the O&amp;M fund. That fund alone has a 9.9 percent increase. That's where most of the capital outlay is found, and we're pushing that up to try and just knock off some, some projects and keep ourselves in a strong position financially. Other account, which is primarily professional development, is up 13.9 percent. Good part of that is tied to our initiatives with Common Core and Abbott. Tuition overall, we see that dropping 6.8 percent, and it's largely just the kids in the pipeline and that we have a fewer number of kids expected to be out of district next year. There it is again in the chart, again, 2.6 percent total expenditures compared to last year's actual, and the contingency is balanced, the same at $1 million outside of that. Tentative budget for non-operating funds, the excess operating revenues, over operating expenditures of 2.1 million are being transferred to the debt service fund to help pay down the long-term debt obligations, make about 20 percent of our long-term debt outstanding being paid by operating funds, and I think that's very unique, and it's a strength of our district right now. If we did have a large calamity, a large problem, we do have bonding capacity without going referendum, which would cover a good portion of that, but obviously, we prefer not to do that because we don't want to increase our tax rate. We'd rather keep it like we have it right now. There it is in chart form, and you can see the debt service line item on top there, transfers in of $2,850,000 are tied to on the bottom, paid from operating funds, the maturities in that lower section are just the principal portion, don't include the interest portion, and that's the difference between the $2,850,000 and the 1.5 million in principal on the bottom. So we're continuing to do a good job there with that. I have, I'll address that a little bit in the five-year forecast, and that comes up next. The tentative budget is the base year for our five-year forecast, so we're using the tentative budget as year one, and then we're forecasting four years out from that, and that's how these, and why these are two items are tied together. So I'm gonna start covering that part right now. The five-year forecast does reflect our ability to maintain a stable profile. However, you know, what every good economist will do is, you know, give you the accept, although assumptions, parameters, and key variables need to be understood, and the key ones obviously are CPIU, the total salaries and benefit relationship with CPIU, the enrollment forecast, and then the future threats and concerns, which I've noted in the narrative, but I'll cover it a little bit in a few minutes. This is the top section of the forecast. In the past, I've never wanted to break these three pieces apart because I've always wanted them to be seen together so, so people couldn't misunderstand what parameters are part of that, but I, just number one, because it won't all fit on a PowerPoint slide very easily, but also because I think we can talk about it in three segments. So I'm gonna take the five-year projection and break it into the three key areas, and I've added that bottom color key just to help us keep in mind what, where those numbers come from. The green areas are known actual amounts, historical amounts that we can verify. The orange background with the white lettering is the average CPIU, and there's a good number of things that are tied to that, and I'll explain that in a minute. And then the yellow background projected are just simple projections, don't have that much of an impact, may have no impact on the forecast, but they're just noting what's coming out of it. Or the yellow with the red, I'm sorry, the orange lettering is projected with high impact. I'm gonna talk about those in a minute. If you look on the right-hand side, under expenditure parameters, you see the column net change. Most of those are not driving the forecast, they're really showing us the results of changes in the forecast. So the average revenue stream of 2.1 percent is simply taking and calculating what the average revenue stream is for the five years of the forecast. The 7.5 percent medical benefit increase, that actually is a driver in this one, where if you change that number, increase it, it will increase our expenditures. If we reduce that percentage, it'll, it'll reduce them. 7.5, I think, is very conservative in a positive way in that I don't think we'll incur that. We have enough reserve in that area that we could probably absorb some increases. It would take a tremendous increase for us to have to go above seven and a half percent on average over the next four or five years. And then the next four lines, FTE changes in FY 2014-15, and then through 2017-18, those are just results of what our FTE total costs are expected to be because of changes in our enrollment. And so you can see, we actually have another year, and I'll get to it in a minute, but we see we have another year of enrollment dropping, and then it starts to push back on us a little bit, and that does factor into the long-term projection. So we will be looking closely at enrollment to see if it tracks in alignment with the study. If we go at, this is the CPIU, this was in the narrative, the, it's a last 10-year actual in the orange columns, and the light blue columns to the right are what we're using for the projection. The two longer horizontal bars there are the 10-year average and then the five-year average. And if you look at 2008, you can see that was the crash year for the recession. I still think of it as an anomaly, but you have to also consider that the 4.1 was an anomaly too. There's, it's rare that we get that high. And so we just kind of use the midpoint, the 2.1 percent. There are economists that are saying it'll be higher than that. There are some economists that'll say that's maybe 2 percent is the floor for the next three or four years, and that the economy is recovering, but I just used 2.1 percent. So that's an important driver because it has a lot to do with our forecast. 84 percent of our revenues are tied to CPIU, primarily through the property tax extension or PATLA tax cap limits. And the increases are limited to inflation and any new property tax added to tax rule. You've heard me echo that to you dozens of times as each year, well, each year, if you've been here a dozen of times, as we issue our lobby. About 74 percent of our expenditures though are also currently tied directly to CPIU. Collective bargaining agreements and even informal agreements or just year-to-year agreements are basically very much tied to that. They're all web intertwined. Transportation contract is tied to CPIU. The food service contract increases are tied to CPIU. And even departmental supply budgets, what we call departmental allocations to our buildings are tied to CPIU. So in essence, about 74 percent of our expenditures are tied to that, and we work hard to make sure that we keep those tied to it because of the impact of CPI on our revenue stream. This chart is, is in your packet in this, or in the online, and it just reflects how there is a correlation because a lot of the, the yellow line is the total compensation, I mean, the total salary and benefits historically. If you were to take the year-end summary that the district has shown it in July and add these salaries and benefits together, this is the increases you would see from year to year. And the green is the revenue stream from year to year for that same period of time. And because there's collective bargaining agreements that are established based on estimated amounts, there have been, we don't hit it every year, but in general, you can see we do, there is correlation, and we do work hard to keep that correlation. Salary and benefits are, you know, a big part of our expenditures, and so it's very important that we have that correlation. Five, well, the key annual variables, biggest thing here is enrollment, obviously, that's in the, going across there. We are assuming that the general ed instruction ratio of students to teacher of 21.8 will stay the same. And you can see though, in the last couple of years for the top line, the projected enrollment using CASARDA, it's gonna jump up to us a little bit, and that's gonna put pressure on, on the projection, and you'll see it in the total numbers when we look at the expenditure side. Another factor, if you look at the, not the bottom line, but the second to last, the major capital outlay, the regular allocation last year in green, there was 1.7 million. We also added an $800,000 project at the end of, just at the very end of the year out of concern that we would have bigger problems if we didn't take care of it last year. There was the piping at North Campus. But the normal allocation was 1.7 million, and this year, we've increased it to 1.8 million, and we're still able to keep a balanced budget. And then the forecast though is our normal allocation is 1.5 million, and that's what's in there. And so when we look at the forecast, you'll see for the next couple of years, we have some surpluses, but this is where we would, absent any other areas like a strategic initiative that we want to address, this is probably where it would go. But this forecast only uses 1.5 million for the out years of 2014-15 through 2017-18. This is the CASARDA, just in a nice little graph to see it, it's gonna run up on the, at the last year. Another important thing that we have built into this is that 20 percent of our long-term obligations are covered by operating funds. And again, this is, right now, a strength because we have a safety net to it. If we were totally dependent upon it, it could be a negative for us, but we, we do have outlets for this, and we, it's just a good thing to show that we, our community, we are doing as much as we can to issue and take care of large capital items through operating funds. We have done that for quite some time now. This is the bottom of the projection where you can see the, in dark green, there are the net change in fund balance. We were forecasting last year, our budget of, I think, a $400,000 loss. We actually took a $985,000 reduction on a cash basis. I think that'll, some of that'll be reduced overall when we get to the modified accrual basis, but that's how it stands right now, and it's, it's less than 1 percent overall, but it's, it's, we're coming off of that to become budget, balanced budget this year, which I'm happy we're able to do. Going forward, you can see in 2014-15, there's $361,000 of surplus, 389 the next year. It starts to drop, and that's largely because of the FTE changes that we're having to add if enrollment stays the same and if we keep the same FTE ratio, which is definitely our plan to do that. So we do have some room in the next couple of years to see how things move for us and what changes, and we have a little bit of money. We also have collective bargaining agreements coming as well though, so. Overall, if you look at the very bottom, right above the color key there, the legend, we're about 5.7 percent of reserve right now. It dips a little bit, then ends up actually back at 5.7 at the end of the five years. So it's relatively stable. Future threats and concerns, I, we just can't get away from the pension crisis. It's been, what, I don't know how many years, we keep wondering what's gonna happen with that, but that's still out there. That's a long-term threat or even maybe short-term threat that we have to address actually. Deannexations are something, we have one in appeal right now, we have another one that may come back to us, where that's a situation where we could lose some significant revenues without an equal cost reduction. And then we have expiring CBAs, collective bargaining agreements, and some other contracts. In 2013-14, this current year, our support staff and food service contracts will expire or will have to go back out. The support staff will be negotiating this year. And then in 2015-16, our faculty CBA expires, and we will also more than likely have to go back out for transportation services. You can only extend it, really go for a maximum of five years under transportation contract. And as long as any competitor asks you to rebid it, we would have to rebid it, and we would expect some competitor to ask us to rebid it. And then the other piece really that's, I would call it more of a concern or just something for us that we keep on the table and are very conscious of, the new programs or service levels, certainly those potentially driven by the strategic plan, and also, well, not the least of which might be a one-on-one type of technology initiative, which could be very expensive, and that's not, that's not in this projection. And then anything else mandated by ISB, which we just never know what that will be. So that was the main presentation. There's a pointer for any questions that the board might have, and if not, we can go to the hearing.
I just had one question way back, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't call you this afternoon. The spike, the revenue or the salary-
Alignment.
Alignment, right, and the one that showed a big spike in the salaries, right there. And I'm trying to remember why that was, was a new contract-
11, 12, I think those were new additions. No, and I think-
Additions to the staff.
Because, well, part of it might have been the support staff contract, which would have pushed that up a little bit, but we did add new staff, and when you're-
I know it looks bigger than it really is.
Yeah, and when it's, some of that is retirements from the prior year.
Ah, okay.
And actually, the, if you look at this, these are percentage changes from year to year. The year before, it dropped pretty hard.
Right.
It's coming off of a relatively low year.
Yeah, I did notice that.
I think 2011, 12 were primarily retirement incentives and other pieces that came into that.
Got it. And I knew that dip was that terrible year. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, let me get back to where we were. As far as the tentative budget, it was approved at the July 15 meeting. It's been on display more than 30 days. Her hearing was advertised in local papers for tonight. So at this point, I would ask the board to, now, if you don't mind, ask for a vote and approve the opening of the hearing for community input.
I declare as vice president, public hearing is open for comment. Anybody like to make comment?
Okay.
Okay. I declare the public hearing closed. Could I have a motion to adopt the budget?
So moved. I'm sorry.
It was Terry. I'll second it if everybody's being very quiet.
All right.
Terry Pavicich.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
All right. There is no old business. And lists, got no new business. This will be our second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any issues. Anybody like to address the board? Okay. Let's go to communications and announcements. Keith, do you have anything on the report? Legislative Education Network, could you page?
I'll, then, won't meet until the end of September.
Okay. Julia, anything to report on the School Association of Special Education?
They're meeting Wednesday, so I'll have more of a report then, but I do know that their, the beginning of their year has gone smoothly, so they've got the staff back and all of that, and they're still in negotiations with their certified staff.
Do we have a report on Illinois Humanities Council?
We're meeting in September as well, but I will, I would, I would just encourage you all to go to the Illinois Humanities Council website. It's an array of wonderful programs that the council does raise money for throughout the state. They're really amazing programs. I've sent a couple of them, recommendations for them to our social studies directors because they're great things for staff and students to get involved in, but there's just all kinds of things that they do on a very limited budget, I might say.
Okay. Report on the Education Foundation, Terry?
We did meet.
There is something coming up. I got an email on it.
Yes, yes. We are working on the pizza wars right now, which is in, gonna be in January, and we are, each one of us took a pizza parlor to chat with and see if they would like to participate in the, in the pizza wars.
No, I thought I had an email about August 23rd. Is there a fundraiser at the Moose?
That's the parent club.
That's for the parent club.
Okay, for North High, okay.
I'm sorry, that's not us.
It's unusual, too.
But I would encourage you to go.
Yes, I read this in a calendar, so.
Because that is for scholarships for students at North. Because that is for scholarships for students at North through the parent club, so, but that is not the foundation, so.
All right. Anything else to bring up?
IASB?
Oh. Even though it's not until October, just get your calendars ready, because there'll be a division meeting that's coming up in October, in fact, I believe it's going to be October 29th. Julian, did you send something out on that already, or was it just that it came from-
Just to save the date.
I thought so, I thought so, but I got one from IASB, too, so just mark your calendars for that, for the Fall Division Dinner Meeting, which is going to be in Bensonville, and for the audience members that are listening, our division dinner meetings are rather nice, they represent a chance to learn more about, you know, hot topics in school governance and administration, and in some divisions, about the biggest legislative developments that are affecting public education, so when we do go, we take away a lot, so it's a good thing to go and learn about what's happening in our own division and in the state. So, thanks.
Okay, you bet. Is there anything else to bring up, or any other comments or suggestions?
I just have a rather sad announcement, for those people who know Bruce and Mickey Beckman, he was a former board president, and his wife, Mickey, just passed away this weekend on Saturday, after a very long, long struggle with cancer, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it was very sad.
Anything else? Okay, our next board meeting will be September 9, 2013, 6:30 PM, Administrative Service Center, and then on September 16, 2013, we have a regular business meeting. I also would like to ask all board members to stay after the meeting to sign the budget with your signature, and could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All those in favor?
Need a second.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, meeting's over.
Congratulations.